Good evening and welcome to the Macomb Township Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is June the 3rd at the time is 7:00 PM. My name is Aaron Tuckfield, I'm the chairman and I'm calling this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is the call to order, so I'm going to move on to the second item and that is the pledge of allegiance. If you could stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we're going to move on to item three, which is roll call. We're, I think, going to go back to our normal roll call mode today, which will be good. So Ms. Lawson, could you please call the roll?
Absolutely. We'll start with Member DeCosta.
Here.
Member Posey.
Here.
Member Piper.
Here.
Chairman Tuckfield.
Here.
And myself, Dawn Slauson. All members are present.
Very good, and all members are present and not remote, so that's good, too. Item four is to address any conflicts of interest. At this time, I just ask if any board members have any items that they have to note a conflict of interest on. Is there anyone who would like to note a conflict of interest at this time? Hearing none, I'm going to move us on to item number five, which is the approval of the agenda. You have in front of you this evening some correspondence from Laner Associates with regards to item 8C, so I would entertain a motion for approval of agenda, the agenda, with the understanding that that item, which would be item 8C, is requesting the item to be postponed until further notice.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment that item number 8C is postponed until further notice.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Slauson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. There was not a nay there, did, was there? I heard something at the end, just wanted to make sure.
Nope.
Okay. Not that I would expect one there, but you never know. It goes on to, we go on to the item six, which is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. This would be for the May 6th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. Is there any motions on the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
Motion by Ms. Slaus, uh, Ms. Posey to approve the meeting minutes from May the 6th, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Slauson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. That motion passes. Next, we're going to move on to old business. Unless Mr. Box tells me otherwise, I don't believe we have any old business this evening.
Not at this time.
He's saying no, so we're going to move on to item eight, which is new business. We have now two items on our new business. The first one is item 8A, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance, section 10.0356A.2, refers to permanent parcel 0807431012. Sean and Nicole Jones are the petitioners here. Mr. Box, could you give us the overview from the township?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, the subject property is located on Crosswind Lane. That is on the north side of 24, about a half mile west of Romeo Plank, as you see in the slides behind you. They are asking for a variance to the setback requirements for the rear yard line from 20 feet down to 13 feet. So this is kind of the existing conditions of the property. It is kind of an irregular shaped property. They already have a pool directly behind the house, and you can see kind of the dashed green or turquoise line, which would be the 20-foot setback line that would be required for this gazebo that they're proposing to place in their rear yard. This side, you can see the 12-by-12 gazebo, where they would like to place it would be inside that 20-foot required setback. So again, that's, that's the variance that they are looking for. And as we look, we took a look at this, I think the thing that we wanted to point out is that if this were a regular, you know, rectangular shaped property, the side yard setback would only be, this would be looking at a side yard setback as opposed to a rear yard. The side yard setback would only require seven and a half feet as opposed to 20. They're asking for 13 feet. I think that a grant of this variance would allow the applicant substantial justice that is more consistent with other property owners as they'll be able to install a gazebo in their rear yard. There's no safety or other concerns at this time with this variance request, and staff recommend approval contingent upon the confirmation that the gazebo will be anchored into the ground.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box. I appreciate the review. Is there any questions from the board for Mr. Box? Hearing none. Is the petitioner in attendance? If you are, please, actually, I'm not sure, I think we should have you come to the standing podium over here, state your name and address for the record, and yeah, mind the cable there, I don't want you, don't want you to trip, and give any comments, additional comments you might have on this item.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to see everyone in person. I guess our only concern is that the building department had placed our pool equipment actually between the, where the gazebo is now, and the fence line. It's three and a half feet off the fence line. Once it was put in, it's not the most attractive thing for the curb appeal, so we would like to put something there other than, you know, a tall shrub because they said roots and things can, you know, interfere with the plumbing. We'd like to put something there that would be more attractive and give the other homes on our street, you know, more of a curb appeal. Make it a little bit more attractive looking is what we're looking for. So this was kind of our best option, plus our house is north and south facing, so we have no shade whatsoever. So for my growing family and my elderly family, even a, you know, a 12-by-12 chunk of shade would be, you know, awesome on our part. So we're just asking you to consider it if you would.
Very good, thank you. Is there any questions from the board for the petitioner? I did have one. I did my site visit over the weekend, I did notice the, the stand there, it is, is a lot of equipment, looks like you probably have a nice pool back there, so congratulations.
Yeah, it's a lot more than we thought.
It always...
But the good thing is it's quiet, so that's great.
It is good, and it's amazing how the mechanicals tend to be larger than, than you ever expect them.
Yes.
I had not thought about it with regards to the gazebo, but I suppose that, that makes sense. Are you expecting to put any sort of cloth on the gazebo? Is it going to be open structure? How do you expect that to operate?
We were just hoping for an open structure. If anything, maybe a screen on the one side to block shade, something that just kind of pulls up and down, nothing solid or anything like that.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Posey.
I just want to confirm that the gazebo will be anchored into the ground?
Yes.
That's all I have.
No problem. Any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I will take it out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? I think we have two members of the public tonight, so. And Mr. Box, yes, thank you. I should check the Zoom meeting, see if anyone would like to speak as, well, I should check. Mr. Box, is there anyone from the public on the Zoom meeting?
No, zero, but...
Okay. So I'm not going to ask if anybody on the Zoom meeting wants to comment. With no further objections then, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. Is there any additional questions, concerns, or motions on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance, section 10.0356A.2, to allow a patio into the rear yard setback area, which requires a 20-foot setback for permanent parcel 0807431012.
Motion by Ms. Posey, is there any support?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Slauson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and the variance is approved. Thank you for coming in and congratulations on your new pool.
Thank you so much, Mike. We're so excited, thank you.
No problem. Hope you get a lot of good use out of it. It moves us on to item 8B, which is a variance from the zoning ordinance, section 10.2106.e, and also a request for 10.0323.e.4, and this is for permanent parcel 081730015. Mark and Brandon Ott are the petitioners. Mr. Box, or possibly Mr. Skirdo, I'm not sure he's going to take us through.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall, we, we visited this property a few meetings back, and they are here seeking some different variances. Since that time, Dave has actually been working closely with them, so we're going to let Dave handle this one right now.
Okay, thank you. Last time you had granted a variance for the west setback and the east setback lines. You did not grant the variance for the paved surface or for the use of a chain link fence at that time. We did work the applicant afters, a couple items that came in which encouraged us to bring them back to you for another consideration. The first is we have them moving the chain link fence right on the property line before they was back further. The other issue I want to bring up is there's a 100-foot setback and a masonry wall required for a storage area when it's adjacent to a residential zoning district, which it still is. Since that time, we've had contact from three different investors looking at purchasing the property. Each of the investors are either going to require an M1 light industrial or an O1 office district zoning in order to get their developments in. So since that time, we've had some interests, none of it's residential, it's all non-residential. With that, a chain link fence is acceptable along the property line. We talked with the applicant, they are back in front of you tonight, they could discuss some details on allowing them to put the chain link fence in, in lieu of the masonry wall, with a condition, if their property does develop as R1 single family, that they will remove the fence and put the wall in place. That's the first item that we want to bring forward to you for discussion. Item two is the paved area. Last time they came in with a small pavement to handle some of the equipment, some of the vehicles, they wanted to leave majority of the storage area for asphalt millings. Since that point, we talked about parking, dust, items like that. Tonight, they came, coming in front of you to seek a situation where they will pay 50% of that back lot that will accommodate all their vehicles that they have, and they wanted to leave the remaining 50% just for barrel or things like that that are non-moving. So that's the two items we, they're bringing back in front of you tonight. I can see, I believe it's Mr. Ott and Mr. Monte, the engineer, are here tonight to discuss more of the details.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Skirdo. Is there any questions for Mr. Skirdo or possibly Mr. Box on, on this issue? Hearing none, I will take it out to the petitioner. If you could, I think, I feel confused because a lot of times we have the petitioner come and sit down, but I think we're doing the podium tonight. If you could come to the podium, state, state your name and address for the record and give any comments you might have.
Good evening, I'm John Monte from Project Control Engineering, here on behalf of Odyssey Properties. Also, Brandon Ott is here in attendance as well, so he can, as the owner, he can give you any specific details that I may not be able to give. As Mr. Skirdo said, we are seeking two variances. We are looking to put a chain link fence on the property line, still leaving a setback as well, a green belt area, with the caveat that if, in fact, that property ever does develop as residential, that we would replace that fence with a masonry screen wall, according to the ordinance. So we think that, looking at the way that it's going, possibly, we heard that possibly, if you look at your master plan, you may consider even rezoning that property to something other than residential, and feel like that's a pretty fair compromise to be able to do that. Lets us develop without the hardship of having to put in a masonry wall when it may not be required in the future. The other part is doing the paving, and so we're requesting that we pave, like Mr. Skirdo said, the last time that this was submitted, there was only a small portion of pavement. They were seeking to leave the majority of the yard more or less a gravel yard. We looked at that and we said, well, we, what we'd like to do is request that we pave 50% of that yard and the remaining portion of the yard be surfaced with crushed asphalt, which would be about the closest that we could get to a surface that doesn't create dust. Although, over the years, asphalt surfaces do, can also be, become dusty, so we would agree to follow that with chloride treatments as necessary, whatever, to ensure that there are no dust issues. It was also in a letter from Mr. Van Tiflin, they requested a copy of the, maybe the equipment that's going to be stored, so if you would, I'd like to pass out that list.
Certainly.
That's okay?
Certainly, and just, if you do come up here, just be careful because there's a step right here, sometimes it's difficult to see with the carpet and I'd hate to have you trip.
I'd hate to trip. So we requested this of the barricade company that's currently leasing the property, and...
Thank you.
So we had an idea of the basic equipment that we could store.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks. So as you can see, kind of at the bottom of the list, they do have a tracked wheel, both rubber tired and steel, skid steer, a small dozer and a mini excavator. Those are typically equipment that a contractor would have, that you would normally picture a contractor's storage yard as being gravel for those types of equipment. There's also a great number of here of barricades and things that they'd be loading and offloading with that skid steer, and also at times with the excavator. So we're hoping that you'll consider the 50/50 paving and that we'll ensure that, we'll also do calcium chloride treatments as needed if dust becomes an issue.
Very good, is that all you had?
That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Is there any questions for the petitioner from the board? Hearing none, I do have, I do have a couple that are going to be kind of a combination, so I just want to ask them now. This might be to Mr. Aloya actually first.
Yes.
The petitioner has indicated that they, they would be willing to put the masonry wall back up at the point that the neighboring parcel were to develop residential.
Sure.
Seeing as this is a variance which typically runs with the land, it almost seems more like an abeyance than a variance if we went that route, would we just put something like that in a motion if we were to grant it, or how would, how would the best way you think to, to put that into the, into the motion to require it be?
It's a condition, so what you would do is you would grant the variance with a condition, it's almost as if it has a sunset clause on it, that in the event it is developed as residential, then they would change it. So no variance would be required at that point.
Would you, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Box, this is zone ag at the moment? Master planned residential or master planned multifamily?
The neighboring parcel?
Yeah.
I believe it's already zoned.
It already is multifamily, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be at the point that it was rezoned, it'd be at the point that it was developed.
So is it, is it master planned for anything, different than what it's currently zoned?
The current master plan is also R1.
Do you see that changing in the future, given the development of 23-mile?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And that is what they're indicating. I, I will note for the record, I believe in the time of my planning commission, I've seen at least one residential development, but obviously, times change and that's what people are looking at at the moment.
Right, but you're got a, you have a 23-mile parcel, so it may be access to a rear residential development, but everything there is in light industrial and commercial for the most part, so I mean, I just, I think the percentage chance of it being redeveloped as residential is very low.
Yes, and, and as Mr. Skirdo already pointed out, we've, we've met with three different potential developers of that neighboring property, and not a single one was for residential use. It was industrial use and an office use, and actually, I met, Dave was not in the office today, but I met with a fourth one today who was looking for a commercial use, which also would not require a masonry wall.
No, and that makes sense, and I'll get to that in a second, but just to drill back down to that, you would, you would make the motion if we were to grant that and, and accept that condition?
Absolutely.
You'd make the motion to grant the variance with the condition that if it was developed residential, that they would put the masonry wall up, would you put a time on there, or would you just, would you just leave it with language that if it was built residential, that a masonry wall would be built?
Yeah, I think that it's upon the event, so upon the event, it's developed as residential, and at that point, they would have to change it out. I don't know that you would be able to put a timeline on it. I mean, if you want to say within six months of the completion of the development next door, I guess you could do something like that. You can do what you, the condition is reasonable, whether you put a timeline on it or not.
Okay. Very good. And, and to the petitioner, does that sound like it'd be in line with what your, your client was expecting if, if you were to put, if we were to put that condition on?
Yes.
Okay. With regards to the, the items you have on here, you mentioned, I think in the paperwork, the, the tracks seem to be your principal concern with the pavement, and I see obviously you have a mini skid steer and a, and a little dozer here. I assume the dozer is being stored only, it wouldn't be used to move equipment around on the site?
No, a dozer wouldn't be used on-site for that.
Okay, and, and then I guess the question I would have, just to make sure I'm understanding, is the mini excavator only used for loading and unloading?
As I understand it, it's used for loading and unloading, and sometimes it leaves the site for other purposes as well.
Okay, so just to verify, if it was primarily at the site, in theory, they, they could put rubber treads on it as opposed to a steel, steel shoe?
I don't know the answer to that. I'm, just got the list myself, so I'm sorry.
No problem, just asking, just asking the question. But, but in, but in your understanding of it, the principal concern is, is dust and not tearing up concrete with a steel tread?
That seems to be the major concern, and that's what I see in most communities, the concern is dust. That's the major concern with pavement.
Just to follow up, and I want to do this while you're still up here. Mr. Box, I know we had talked about this briefly, and you had mentioned one of your concerns was impervious surface, and that maybe this would help with that as a wider thing, it might be something we look at going forward, maybe even the zoning ordinance on, on how we're treating it?
Correct. So right now, the impervious surface is usually only applied to residential properties, but we do limit them to 50% as it can create large amounts of runoff, and then you get flooding on neighboring properties. This is not obviously a residential property, but were they to pave that entire rear yard, they also have a parking lot in front and a building on-site, at this point, we're looking at probably 70 to 75% of the property would be impervious surface.
Okay. And then I guess the last question, and we had talked about this, and I don't remember where it was, but I guess I'll just, I'll ask again in case you'd looked it up. I know we have another company that is nearby that stores a large amount of, of heavy equipment. They're a rental company, and they have a lot moving in and out. I know the back of their lot is not paved. Was that part, do you know if that was part of the site plan, that that happened? Was that, I don't recall a variance for it.
I, I believe most of that happened before I got here, so I don't know exactly, but I do know that they have dozens and dozens of steel tracked vehicles, and that I think would play into the fact that if it were, you know, paved or asphalt, it would be torn up pretty quickly by some of their vehicles.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Box, and thank you, Anna. I should know you because I know I've seen you before. Thank you, Mr. Monte, appreciate, appreciate. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Only question I had is, is this something that we should require a bond to, for that wall? Or is that...
I think, I would, I would give it to Mr. Aloya, that I think we could ask for it. I don't know that that would necessarily...
I just don't know if that was appropriate, and, and that's just a, just a thought.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think what staff's indicating is they're fairly confident it's not going to be needed because it's going to go to a different zoning. I know my concern, if you just take the parcel across 23-mile road, the Elite Sports Fence or, or Elite, well, now it's Elite Industrial, I guess, they came to us asking for a sports thing, so they couldn't build industrial, and then three years later, after they sued us, now they're building industrial. My only concern, and this is why I want to make sure that the, that this proviso is in there, is things change, you know? Who knows what happens in two years, and two years, suddenly, we could have a residential facility there, and I think that it's good to maintain the masonry wall between residential and industrial. We've, we've seen a lot of residents who indicate that's something that really matters to them when they live next door, so.
Makes sense.
Very good. With that being said, if no one else has any questions, I will probably take it out to the public, although we should verify if we have public. Mr. Box, not to make you run, but can you, can you tech and see if we have any public out in, in the Zoom meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question if we can. On the plan, the blue line is where, the blue line is where the proposed chain link fence will go. What is currently south of that proposed chain link fence? Do we know?
I don't. I would direct that to Mr. Box or the petitioner.
I think that's the building.
It's almost, correct, yeah.
And, and for the record, Mr. Mr. Ott is in the...
He has to go to the...
Yeah, and if you could, sir, if you could come and just...
Watch the cords.
Yeah, we don't want you to trip on that either.
So what I'm asking is, on the plan behind us, there's a blue line where the proposed chain link fence is to be installed?
Yeah.
That would be replaced with a masonry wall if it developed. What is currently south of there now?
Where the, where the blue lines would stop, there's, there's just grass there, and the, the fence would actually turn and go east and like connect, connect to the side of the building.
West, yeah, I think there's already a fence right here where the cursor is, if you can see the cursor.
Yeah, I believe we saw that in our last plan, and basically, my question is, if this does get developed as residential, are they going to be required to put a masonry wall south of that location?
25 feet, which was approved on the last one, is exactly where the building is. So basically, the wall would come straight down and connect right to the building, like even with the side of the building. So there would be nothing to the south, it would just, you'd just look grass from north to south all the way down the property for 25 feet.
I'm, I'm confused here. This must be with regards, and I don't, I don't remember the original variance. Did we grant that the wall could be off the lot line? Was that what you had mentioned earlier?
25 feet instead of 100.
So, and, and before I go further, can you just state your name and record for the address?
Brandon Ott, 535-88 Oak Grove.
Okay, very good. And to follow up on Mr. DeCosta's question, so was what you're saying, if that, if that happened, you would put the masonry wall in line with the building and not with the lot line?
Yes, that, that's what was approved in, in the other meeting before we had discussions.
Okay, that's where I'm getting confused. I thought it would be a replacement, they'd remove the chain link fence on the property line and replace it with a masonry wall. I guess my concern would then be back to who's going to maintain that 25-foot of grass between a proposed residential property and your wall.
If, if I could comment?
Go ahead.
Mr. Skirdo, do you believe that's the requirement, is the wall is on the, on the property line? Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So the, the wall would be on the same line that the blue line is shown there, and the, the wall would not extend further to the south because the purpose of the wall is to screen the storage area.
Okay.
And the storage area ends there.
Is that satisfactory with the pun? Okay. That was, thank, that was, thank you.
If I could follow up on that, don't we require a buffer wall all the way to the front setback between residential and industrial? I thought it...
I, I think only to the front of the, the storage area is where it's required.
Okay.
Maybe we can put in the condition that the wall will go...
Well, if, if that's all we're looking at, it'd be wherever, it'd be wherever the fence is that they're looking at now, it's just replacing it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if it does go residential, would they have to meet the intent of the ordinance? And if the ordinance is the front setback, would they have to install more masonry wall than what's there now? Right?
I think that would be a separate question.
Okay.
If, if they have to do another wall, then I would, I would think that the, if, if there is a requirement for it elsewhere, they would still fall under the requirement for us. We are, we're saying that they can put in a fence, if they have to put in a masonry wall, it would still revert back to it, and they would, I think the full force of the ordinance would, if Mr. Aloya wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I think it's whatever the ordinance is at, at the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
This question's for Mr. Box. The engineer department indicated in their review that in order for a variance to be granted, they must, the owner must show a practical difficulty. One of those practical difficulties would be to determine if the equipment on this list provided this evening would be detrimental to pavement. In your opinion, does this equipment fall into that category?
Yeah, I think this, the two at the bottom, the steel tracked vehicles would meet that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
And I, and I would follow it up, Ms. Posey. And I've spent a lot of time with heavy machinery in the last five years in the business that I'm in. And while it is possible to run tracked equipment on concrete, it is certainly not optimal. And it certainly will wear the concrete quicker than it would otherwise.
I have no further questions.
Very good. Mr. Box, you indicated there was no one on Zoom. So seeing as we have no one in the public, I am not going to go to the public portion. I will maintain with the board, is there any further questions, comments, or motions? The only thing I would ask is if we go to motions on this one, please make sure you state any reasoning you have for the motion when you make it.
Are we doing these one at a time?
I think we should do them one at a time. And let me verify which is the first one. I think it is the wall.
Yeah, it is. Yep.
Yes, I believe it's the wall. So it would be on the fence, six-foot masonry wall to become a chain link fence.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion on this. And my motion will be to grant the variance regarding section 10.2106E for the property located at 1762523 Mall Road. And the variance would be to allow a six-foot chain link fence with screen covering in lieu of a six-foot decorative masonry wall. This variance will have a condition that if the property to the east is ever, ever developed as residential, then the developer, developer will have to install the six-foot masonry wall per our ordinances.
And if you could, just any of your reasoning for that?
My reasoning is that, from what we've heard today, that the, there are some intense requests and desire to rezone this property next door as a potential non-residential use.
Very good. A motion by Mr. DeCosta, is there support?
Support.
I think I heard Ms. Lawson first. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Is there any motions on the second variance request? This would be with regards to the storage area going to half hard surface and half gravel.
I will make a motion to grant that variance because I think having the gravel will help with the drainage. I think that's actually a benefit for the surrounding area to have the, the, they have less runoff because of the impervious surface.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Piper, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. I think I'm going to call a roll call on this one. Ms. Ms. Lawson, could you call the roll on this?
Oh, certainly. Member Piper?
Yes.
Member DeCosta?
Yes.
Member Posey?
Yes.
Chairman Tuckfield?
Yes.
Member Lawson, yes.
Very good. Just added a third curve ball. Sorry, Don.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you. That takes us to 8C, which was actually postponed. So I will go to item nine. This is public comments. We have no one in the audience this evening, but at the risk of making Mr. Box get up again, could you please check Zoom and just make sure there's still no one in the, in the audience electronically? All right. Very good. Mr. Box has informed us that there is zero members in the audience on Zoom. So with no further discussion, we're going to move on from item nine to item 10, which is ZBA member comments. Are there any comments from the members this evening?
I just have one. I'm just wondering if, are we planning on a July meeting? And two, I'm assuming that one will be at 6:30, correct?
Correct.
I know we talked about this one, probably wouldn't be.
Yep.
Will it be July 1st? We do have a meeting in July 1st.
We will have a meeting, correct.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. DeCosta?
Nope.
Anything else from any of the other members? The only thing I would mention, Mr. Box, is if we could put the minutes on, or pardon me, the bylaws on for the July meeting. The planning commission did adopt a new set of bylaws after long discussion. And so I think we should probably look at ours and those ones and just make sure that we apply changes as necessary. With that, oh, Mr. Box, you're going to talk at all about master plan tonight? I wanted to mention a few things, but I don't want to talk about what you were planning on. Okay. Just briefly, Mr. Box and Mr. Skirdo updated us on the master plan on Tuesday. Mr. Skirdo's firm has been short a few people. I think we, we took one of his assistants and that may have set him back a little bit. We're happy, but I don't think he's quite as happy. And so he had not been able to work on it as much as maybe we had wanted to or he had wanted to, but he has gotten back into it. I believe the planning commission is expecting to see our first draft copy shortly. There is a process with that, which if anybody's interested, we can certainly talk about. And if anybody's interested in seeing the draft, I'd be certainly happy to forward it along just so you, you can see it and recognize what we're doing and where it's going. It's the first step of the more formal process of, of discussion and adoption of the master plan. And I expect it'll go on at least a few months so that there will be plenty of time to discuss it, both here, if we have comments at meetings, and then also the ZBA, as the public can also take part in, in a lot of the meetings we have. So I just encourage you, you know, we, we see, we see at this board where the planning commission sometimes falls short. So it's probably a good thing if you're engaged and have any comments to keep an eye out and interact if you see something that needs to be mentioned. So just a heads up on that. And I think that's all I have, except that it's good to be back with everybody in person and some semblance of normal and onwards and upwards.